Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's Monday, February 17th. We are pleased to have Pastor Harold Thomas III from Shiloh Seventh Day Adventist Church, 810 Church Street, to give our invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, you're the shepherd, leader, and guide for nations. We thank you for the privilege and opportunity to serve this community. We ask for your Spirit of wisdom, understanding, counsel, power, knowledge, discernment, reverence for you, and respect for all to be present this evening. You are acquainted with the decisions for tonight. May the decisions be in line with your will. Please protect the city of Smyrna and Cobb County. Keep it safe from disaster, disease, disorder, and disruption, and may your promise of peace rest upon all tonight. Amen.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us this evening. Next item is two agenda changes. We do have one. I believe Councilmember Wilkinson wants to make a motion to suspend the rules and add an item to formal business. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at this time, I would like to move to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda. This one is to A 2020-107, suspend the rules to add an agenda item to former business, item D, for an authorization to appoint Mr. Jim Davis to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ward Five seat.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0, and that'll be item 6D under formal business. Next item is the mayoral report. I'll just go ahead and go straight to the main event. We are so pleased tonight. I know a lot of you are here for swearing in of Chief Joe Bennett. And I know when we had him here, I guess it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, I read a little bit of his bio and his background, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing again, but I do want to just mention a few highlights because we truly have a rock star moving into this position for our city. I know that Joe's parents are here. I know Mary and Caitlin and Joey are here with him this evening. He's a graduate of Reinhardt, where he was awarded the Bachelor's Degree in Organizational Management and Leadership, graduated from Columbus State University with a Master's Degree in Public Safety Administration. He's currently pursuing his doctorate in public administration from Valdosta State University. Chief Bennett's a graduate of Mercer University Public Safety Leadership Institute, Class 50 of the Georgia Law Enforcement Command College, the 248th Session of the FBI National Academy, and the Senior Executives in State and Local Government Program at Harvard University's Kennedy School of Government. He's been with the force for 25 years. He grew up here in Smyrna, and I can't think of anybody more deserving of the honor to serve as our next chief. And at this point, I'd like to call up Judge Phyllis Collins, who's going to administer the oath. Y'all come up with your family.
Is this okay, Mayor?
It's okay, Mayor.
Y'all want to do it there?
We can do it here.
I will. I will. I want to thank everyone who has come out tonight and in support. It truly means a lot. There are a few people in the crowd I would like to recognize who have truly been mentors throughout my career, first being my predecessor, Chief David Lee, our former chief Stanley Hook, his wife is in the crowd, Patty, and wherever he is, Lieutenant Joe Martin against the wall. All these people were very instrumental in me being where I am today. And again, I work with some of the finest men and women in law enforcement, and for that, I appreciate it. So to introduce my wife, Mary, my daughter Caitlin, my son Joey, my father, James, my mother, Barbara, and my brother, Jimmy. And again, without my family, I certainly wouldn't be where I am. But again, thank you all.
Y'all want to hold the Bible for him? Do you want to hold the Bible for him? Raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible. I, Joseph Bennett...
I, Joseph Bennett.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support...
That I will support.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Georgia...
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
...and that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...the Office of Smyrna Chief of Police...
The Office of Smyrna Chief of Police.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
I further do...
I further do.
...solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
...that I will bear...
That I will bear.
...true faith...
True faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the City of Smyrna.
To the City of Smyrna.
...that I will serve...
That I will serve.
...it faithfully...
It faithfully.
...against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
...whosoever.
Whosoever.
I swear that I am not the holder...
I swear that I am not the holder.
...of any unaccounted-for...
Of any unaccounted-for.
...public money...
Public money.
...due to state...
Due to state.
...or any political subdivision...
Or any political subdivision.
...or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I do further swear...
I do further swear.
...that I am not the holder...
That I am not the holder.
...of any office of trust...
Of any office of trust.
...under the government...
Under the government.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
Any other state...
Any other state.
...or any foreign state...
Or any foreign state.
...which I am...
Which I am.
...by the laws of the State of Georgia...
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
...prohibited from holding.
Prohibited from holding.
I swear that I am otherwise qualified...
I swear that I am otherwise qualified.
...to hold said office...
To hold said office.
...according to the Constitution...
According to the Constitution.
...and laws of Georgia...
And laws of Georgia.
...and in my actions...
And in my actions.
...as Chief of Police...
As Chief of Police.
...will act as I believe...
Will act as I believe.
...for the best interests of the City of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the City of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Let's make sure Joey knows that everybody saw him down there waving. Thank you, Judge, for being with us, and congratulations, Chief. Other item under the mayoral report. We had our first annual city-sponsored Black History Celebration on Saturday, and by all accounts, it was a tremendous success, and I look forward to making that an annual event and having it bigger and better each year. And I want to special thank you to Councilman Louis Wheaton, who was our council liaison and worked with the Citizen Committee to put on the event. They didn't have a whole lot of time to do it, but they worked very hard, and I think was a very successful event, so thank you so much for that. And then along those lines, we have been talking about bringing back an event that we've had previously in the city called "The Spice of Life," where we bring everybody together and kind of celebrate all of the cultures that are here in Smyrna. And my intention is to bring that back. October 10th is an event called "The Culture and Spirit Celebration." So just put that on your calendars as penciled in, and we'll fill in details later. That concludes the mayoral report. The next issue is item four, Land Issues, Zonings, and Annexations. Item A is 2019-438. It's a public hearing. Zoning Request Z19-018, rezoning from R-20 to R-15 or similar single-family zoning district for the development of two single-family homes at a density of 2.22 units per acre, .90 acres, landlot 557, 1460 Memory Lane. Reggie Lopez is the applicant. This is a public hearing. Let's go ahead and bring anybody who thinks they want to speak or wants to speak, or come on up and get sworn in, even if you think you want to say something and might not have our city attorneys swear you in. Thank you. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Reggie Lopez is seeking approval for a rezoning for 1460 Memory Lane from R-20 to R-15 for the development of two single-family detached residence at a density of 2.2 units per acre. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing single-family home and then subdivide the parcels into two lots and construct two individual single-family residence. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended denial of the rezoning from R-20 to R-15 by a vote of seven to zero at the December 9th, 2019 meeting. Community Development Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R-20 to R-20 conditional for the development of two single-family residence with conditions. Rusty Martin, our Community Development Director, is here to give additional background once directed to.
Come on up.
Good evening. Rusty Martin with the City of Smyrna Community Development Department. Ms. Sadler Jones did a great job summarizing the requests from planning and zoning to this point. The subject property is 1460 Memory Lane. It is just under one acre in size. It's located in Ward Six. There is one single-family home and a pool and an accessory structure on the lot. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the lot into two lots and build two new single-family homes. So they'll demo the existing house and the pool and build two new single-family homes. The current request in front of you is from the applicant is go from R-20 to R-15. I'll explain later with respect to the staff's recommendation that that may change. The city's future land use for the area is low-density residential. The future land use designation will not change with this zoning request. The density for the site is under three units per acre, which is under the low-density requirement. All surrounding properties have a low-density residential, future land use classification. Just to orient you guys with some history on the site, staff was able to locate the recorded plat from 1951. The subject property is highlighted in red. It was originally lots 11 and 12 of the FM Collier subdivision. These two lots had 100-foot width and approximately 195 to 196 feet of depth. If you look at the remaining lots within this subdivision that was recorded, the three other lots along Memory Lane on the south side have similar lot sizes and are under 20,000 square feet. This is the proposed site plan for the development. You got both homes facing Memory Lane, with one home having a side entry access off of Northview Place. The other has a side entry access, but it is off of Memory Lane. For the R-20 zoning districts, setbacks are a front setback of 35 feet, an interior side of 12, an exterior side along Northview Place of 23 feet, and a rear setback of 35. These are the proposed locations for the stormwater detention facilities to handle stormwater management for the site. With this request, we are requesting a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Memory Lane and Northview Place as part of this request to bring the right-of-way up to the minimum standard of 50 foot. As I stated before, here's your access from Memory Lane for the first house, and then your access from Northview Place. And then with this request, there's also a stipulation requiring a 15-foot undisturbed buffer that was requested by the neighborhood. These are the actual home elevations presented for the development, so these will be the homes that are built on these lots. This is the subject property as it stands today, and then some adjoining properties. As I stated earlier, staff's recommendation is to rezone the property from R-20 to R-20 conditional, which is different from the applicant's request. We modified our zoning condition based off of the information we heard during our public meetings and the P&amp;Z meeting that the neighborhood was concerned that the R-15 zoning district would set a negative precedent for their neighborhood. So we went back, modified that to an R-20 conditional, which is a site plan, site plan-specific zoning, so they're tied to the site plan and the elevation submitted with that zoning, and not give the opportunity to set the precedent for R-15 in the neighborhood. With that, we are requesting a list of conditions from Section 1201 of the zoning ordinance. The first set of conditions are standard conditions that apply. The first one deals with the composition of the homes. The elevations that face the exterior roadways are not allowed to use hardy plank siding for those elevations, and then this stipulation also limits the use of 100% hardy plank for any elevation. Number two requires utilities be underground. Number three requires a developer to be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary during plan review. Number four prohibits the burying of debris on-site. Number five requires the developer to follow the city's current tree ordinance. Number six requires landscape plans to be prepared by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. Number seven requires the common areas to be sotted in landscape. Number eight is a planning schedule for the lots, which requires a minimum of 12 inches of trees for the site. On top of those standard conditions from Section 1201, staff is also requesting several special conditions be added. Number nine outlays the setbacks that were established in the site plan. Oops, sorry. Number 10 requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. 11 is the five-foot right-of-way dedication along Memory Lane and Northview Place. 12 is the requirement for the five-foot sidewalk along both rightaways. 13 limits the maximum height for the structures to 35 feet. 14 requires all fire access requirements being met by the applicant during construction plan review. 15 requires a developer to be responsible for any water sewer improvements. 16 requires the developer to be responsible for any stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. 17 ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted. 18 ties the zoning to the minimum lot size of 19,463 square feet, and then after the right-of-way dedication of the five feet, that would equate to a lot size of 18,018 In addition to the staff stipulations, the developer requested to add some additional stipulations to address some of the comments they heard throughout the process, so we went ahead and incorporated those stipulations into our recommendation as well. 20, the elevations of the houses shall not exceed those heights shown in updated elevations, which is less than 35 feet. 21, the developer shall abide by all Smyrna required construction hours and will notify all subcontractors of the Smyrna noise ordinance. The developer slash builder shall give his phone number to all neighbors in close proximity to the homes so they can call him with issues. 22, the developer shall direct all vendors to use Atlanta Road for deliveries. If any damage occurs due to delivery trucks, CMS Custom Homes shall repair all damage and backcharge all vendors. Number 23, the developer shall leave a 15-foot undisturbed buffer at the rear of the property, subject only to diseased or dead trees certified by an arbiter or other issues that could cause serious bodily harm or serious damage. And 24, adhere fully to the city's new tree ordinance, which would be enforced by the City of Smyrna. Some of those stipulations are a little bit duplicate, but that's fine. We can address those. They don't conflict with each other. With that, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for Rusty?
Rusty, I think the square footage shown on the plats themselves of the lots, that is post-right-of-way dedication. I'm showing one, lot number 12, 18,0018, and lot number 11, 19,094. Is that correct?
Those are post-dedication. We don't penalize the applicant for dedicating right-of-way to the city for a request.
Okay, so that's after he's dedicated to five.
Yes, so he's dedicating property, he's making improvements in that right-of-way. We're not going to dock him from that.
Rusty, just a couple of questions. Thanks for the good presentation, as always. I might have missed the date. How long has this property been treated as a single lot?
I don't, we weren't able to find a building permit application for the house, but guessing with respect to the style of the home, I would say it's been 40, 50 years at least.
At least the age of the house that's there currently, something like that, okay. Right, so it's basically been a single lot for some time. And then jumping around a little bit, the detention pond in the back, the retention systems, rather, is that relatively standard design as far as you know? I know it's more of an engineering question, but in your experience, is there anything particular about that property that requires that?
No, it's just a requirement based off of when you subdivide a property into two lots that we require a water quality management system as part of that.
Gotcha, okay.
So those will be underground trenches, infiltration trenches, so they won't be visible from above ground.
Let's see, and P&amp;Z, I know the presentation was R-20, R-15 at the time, but just so we know, what was the vote from the P&amp;Z?
Seven, zero to deny.
Partially around the zoning requirement, in your opinion?
I guess you have to clarify what you're trying to get at.
Sorry, at the time, it was R-20 to R-15?
Yes, yes. Yeah, they opposed the use of the R-15 district.
Okay.
I guess with additional other things, but from that meeting, that was the main issue that I heard.
Anything else that comes to mind that...
Well, they raised the issue of the trees and the height of the buildings and everything else that has been discussed in the memo.
Any other questions of Rusty? Like to bring the applicant up? Mr. Lopez?
You just didn't want to see me?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having me. My name is Matt Bentley, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant who's with me here today, Reggie Lopes, as well as Janice Sutherland, who is one of the two owners of CMS Custom Homes LLC. Her husband recently passed due to cancer, so he was not able to be here with us today. But I'm happy to have them here with me. That was a fantastic presentation, so thank you for that. Rusty, as he mentioned, we timely filed a application to rezone this piece of property from R-20 to R-15. As you can see from the picture... As you can see from the picture up here, this particular piece of property is quite common to the surrounding area. So common, in fact, that if it was to revert back to its original form and taking away the right-of-way that my client is willing to dedicate to the city, it's actually a little bit larger, as you can see, than the lots, the four lots that surround it to the south. This particular piece of property, as he mentioned, was originally two lots based in accordance with the original platted subdivision of the neighborhood, and all my client is asking for you to do, all he's asking for you to do, is put it back to the way that it was before. I don't think that that's a crazy or abnormal request. I think it just flat-out makes sense. Now, as he mentioned, Smyrna staff originally recommended approval. It was put before the planning commission, at which point it was denied. But understand this, and this is critical, at that time, as Councilman Gold mentioned, we were seeking a rezoning based on the R-15 criteria. At this point, we are seeking a rezoning based... At this point, we are seeking a rezoning based on the R20 conditional criteria, which we believe helps with some of the neighborhood's concern. Now, this change was recommended because it makes sense, but also because it's what the neighborhood seemed to want. The plans that we've submitted are in compliance with all Smyrna regulations, and it complies with the future land use map, doesn't need any change to the future land use map to be granted. As I mentioned just a second ago, when you look at this picture, it just makes sense. As a practical matter, it just makes sense. And I know that a lot of times people will come in here seeking rezonings where they want extremely high density in certain areas. In this case, we're asking for what surrounds the property. Here's what the developer plans to build. And we specifically lowered the height of one of the two homes where practical, where practicable to be about a foot lower at the neighborhood's request. With the other home, it's a walk-in attic, and so in that particular home, it was not possible, but we're still well under the 35-foot height requirement. As a final point, and I think that this is important, we did everything we could to work with the neighborhood. We went and we met with them, we spoke numerous times to the councilman for the district, we reached out to the neighborhood after the meeting and asked them to provide us with a list of stipulations so that we could cure any concerns that were reasonably practicable. They sent us a list of things that they wanted done. We added them as stipulations. We had them approved. We sent them back to the neighborhood and asked them if they had any other stipulations for us, and we didn't hear back. Now, some of the neighbors will come up here and they will complain about what it is that we're trying to do. And a couple of things that you'll notice when the neighbors speak. They're not going to say that this particular rezoning will lower the value of their properties. They're not going to say that it doesn't make sense for this particular rezoning to occur. The reason it's going to raise property values in the area, and it makes sense to rezone the property this way, we're just putting it back to its original form. What they, what some of these neighbors want is to simply shut down the development of property in their neighborhood. And from my personal opinion, and I think hopefully from the opinions of some of the people up here, when something makes as much sense as this does, and without good reason to deny it, you have to look out for, certainly you have to look out for the neighborhood, but you also have to look out for the owner, who's lived in Smyrna for 18 years, lived in that neighborhood for 18 years. And we're not asking for anything crazy. We're asking for something that is nearly identical to a lot of the surrounding lots in the area, nearly identical, and in some cases, lots that are slightly larger. So I'm going to bring up the applicant Reggie Lopes real quick to explain a little bit about the construction and what he's building.
Good evening. My name is Reggie Lopes, and I am the builder for CMS Custom Homes. So as far as the product that we're trying to build, these homes will be right at about 4,000 or a little over 4,000 square feet. Architecturally, we have tried to encompass a four-sided construction, so we are going to be, whatever you see on the front will be done on the sides as well as the rear, which I know was very important to the community. And we are looking to just build two beautiful homes that are not too large and/or overpowering for the community. We could build one really large home, but that would really, in my opinion, stand out more so than building these two smaller homes. You know, I have made a commitment because I know one of the complaints has been a lot of the white homes in the community. I will be happy to put as a stipulation to use another color other than white for the main body of these homes if that were to, you know, to have the community like or approve of these two homes. You know, again, we're not looking to in any way devalue the community. We're looking to build something that is beautiful and nice. Is there any questions?
Any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Lopes and Mrs. Sutherland, your team did a nice job, met with the community, as Matt mentioned, and you did a fine presentation, and it's such a big part of the process, just for this project, for any project, for residents to have a chance to express, you know, their concerns and hear directly from the builder in this case, and then for you guys to go back and try to make, you know, make some necessary adjustments. Sometimes those meet, you know, satisfy the neighborhoods, and sometimes, you know, they don't. But definitely appreciate all the effort you did and the willingness to invest in the city of Smyrna, right? I mean, Forest Hills is a great place to build, partially because of the dedication and the involvement of the residents of Forest Hills, right? They're very passionate about the city and about their neighborhood, and that's important.
And I agree with you, and again, I'm not looking to hide or take advantage in actuality, because I did give my business card and my personal cellphone to the neighbors around there, because again, I understand, I mean, I live, I don't want, you know, if there are subcontractors that are working after hours, please call me, I'll make sure it gets shut down. You know, I'm very respectful of their homes and not to have them be interrupted, you know. I'm willing and have been willing to work with the community, so.
Right, right. So, and then also, you know, conversely, like I know Mrs. Melton, when she had the property, she was, you know, had some long-term desires and that, so I know the neighborhood wants to, you know, respect those, and it's your property, you know, it's Mrs. Sutherland's your property, the company's. So it's a, yeah, we got a lot of good folks involved in this.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions of the applicant? Or Mr. Bentley? All right, this is in Mr. Gould's district. Mr. Gould? Oh, let me close the, I guess I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Gould. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's been a long day, y'all, sorry. At this point, I will ask anyone who'd like to speak for or against to come up. When I did that, everybody went, whoa, whoa, whoa. Sorry about that, y'all.
No, I want that one up there.
Yeah. Can you put it up there?
How do I do that?
Jump one up there.
Okay. My name is Brian McCarthy. I live at 3162 Northview Place. Mine is the one that says McCart on there. It's supposed to, should say McCarthy, but whatever. I sent an email this afternoon to my councilman, Tim, and to the mayor about really my concerns, and most of them have been addressed by the application in terms of the written stipulations that are on there for enforcement, namely the nature buffer zone, the four-sided construction, and I can't remember the other one. But anyway, I saw them up on the stipulation. The, my biggest concern about this development is the sidewalk to nowhere, as my neighbors have started to call it. And the reason for that is, is because unless the city has plans that I don't know about to put sidewalk and curb on Northview and Memory Lane, when these sidewalks go up on that corner, they literally will go to nowhere. And it will be like that for the foreseeable future because all of the properties on Memory Lane and all of the properties on Northview are not large enough to sustain a development like this one. So even if the council approves this one, there won't be another piece of property that you could develop in the same manner and put a sidewalk on. So you're going to have a sidewalk on a corner that literally will be there for, I mean, the foreseeable future. I'm not sure, I understand that it's in the ordinance or whatnot for the development because it's replacing one home with two. However, it just doesn't make sense to put it there, whether or not, I don't know how the city can address that in terms of either making a trust account or something, but putting a sidewalk there on that corner is just not feasible or really any sort of, it just, I mean, it literally will go to nowhere forever. So that's really, all of my other concerns were addressed by the stipulations.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up?
Thank you. My name's Todd Servick, and I'm on Pine Tree Drive. And the reason why we moved to Forest Hills were the big lots, and I feel that there's been somewhat of a precedence being set, and I'm opposed to it, and I like the big lots, that's why we moved here. And I would agree with Brian, making a sidewalk to nowhere makes absolutely no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. My name's Chris Weifel. I live at 3289 Lee Street in Forest Hills. I support the rezoning request for two reasons. First, the developer has agreed to plant trees and more vegetation in the buffer zone in the back south end of the properties. These trees will replace some of the trees lost to build the new houses. Second, the rezoning does not represent a precedent for future rezoning. Rather, it returns a double-sized acre lot to its original two half-acre lots. The new properties will match the lot sizes of the surrounding properties. I do have one request. I didn't get to see the stipulation sheet, so I wasn't able to give feedback at that time. If there are trees taken down that cannot be replaced on these properties, then I'd like to ask the developer to donate to the city of Smyrna the equivalent number of trees. On a project building two $900,000 houses, I feel that economically speaking, this is a reasonable request. And I'll add another request, please no white houses too, since you asked. Finally, I'd like to thank the developer and the council members for meeting with the residents. That was a precedent that we should keep. Thanks.
Can I ask a question? Where do you live in proximity to it? I'm sorry.
About a three-minute walk.
Good evening, mayor and council. How are you guys? Congratulations to our new chief. I think you also swore in his son, just so you know, he's available to serve. I know most of you, I don't know all of you, because some of you are new to council, so I don't mean to bore anyone, I really don't, but I want you to know, the new people especially, I was chair of the Planning and Zoning Board for Smyrna for seven years. I then moved to Cobb County where I chaired that planning commission for 10 and 1/2 years. So I have lots of zoning experience in my background. Now, that is just to say, I look at zonings like this, requests like this, a little differently than many people here would look at it. So I analyzed it, and then I talked to many of my neighbors, and I came up with a few points that I really want you to consider. I do know, I think I know, and had been told by many of my neighbors, that the elderly person that owned this property was of the impression that her house would be improved, someone would move in and live there for a while, and then at some point, they would demolish it and put up one house. Now, that's not what we're being asked to do here today. So what changed? I have seen this many times before at the county and at the city level. This is usually about profits. You can put two houses up and make more money than you can if you put up one. But I have said to some of you, and you'll remember when I talk to you about this, it's not the responsibility of the city to ever try to help a developer improve his profits. Number two, the developer said, "Well, putting one house on this lot doesn't make a lot of sense for a number of reasons, and I'm not even sure I could sell one house on this lot." I heard him say that. Well, the facts don't support that at all. If you've been in our neighborhood, on any of the streets in our neighborhood, you'll find lots of houses that sell for $700,000 to well over $1 million. One sold a few weeks ago for $1.3. So a nice big house on this beautiful lot would absolutely sell. My wife and I get offers to sell our large lot all the time. We had an offer last week, so that doesn't hold water. The developer and the staff both have mentioned what the zoning is around this lot. There's a lot of R15, a lot of R20. I'm not sure that's really relevant, I'm not sure how important that is, but I want you to consider this. My wife Sue and I, she's here tonight, we drove around the neighborhood a few days ago with a notepad. Now, I grew up in this neighborhood. I won't tell you how old I am, but I've lived here for a long time, so I do know the neighborhood quite well. And as she drove, I made notes, and here's what I found. On Dunn, Lee, Pine Tree, Collier, Memory, and Northview, there are 38, 38 homes, most of them built in the 50s, that have had major remodel work done to them. Now, I'm not talking about adding a bathroom. I'm talking about one and $200,000 remodels, 38. There were 27 more that were totally demolished to the ground and built up new, brand-new. But each and every one of these, that's 65 homes, and that's all within the last few years, 65 homes, every single one of them, no zoning required, and it's one house on one lot. Okay, keep that in mind. Also, there were three vacant lots that were built. Two of them were R20, one was R15. Again, they didn't have to come back and ask for any rezoning there. So that's, you have to keep that in mind. The builder says that adding two large lots, two large houses to this lot would be compatible with the existing neighborhood. I tell you, it would not. We do have some large houses. We have a couple under construction right now, beautiful, but they fit the property. Again, it's one house on one lot. The roof slope and the roof height has all been designed so that it fits into the neighborhood. So I really don't think it's compatible with this neighborhood at all. In fact, the Forest Hills Preservation Group, of which I was a founder, we have lots of our members sitting here in the audience tonight. We were founded for the very purpose of keeping an eye on this kind of development. Number five, the builder said, and you heard him say, "This was originally two small lots, and we just want to put it back the way it was. We want to go back and put two lots here where there's one now." And technically, that's true, but you have to think what was here when this was done. This house that's there now was built there 67. You asked him how long ago it was? 67 years ago. It's been one house on one lot for 67 years. I think that's important. The house that's there now is 2,156 square feet. The houses they're proposing, he just told us, 8,000 square feet combined. That's 3 and 1/2 times the square footage of what's there now. I think that's excessive. The builder told this neighborhood group that the city, if the city allows this to go through just one house, that they won't have any control over it. They told us that in the neighborhood meeting. That's not true either. They'll have total control over it. If it's an R20, if it's R20, they have to abide by the R20 standards, everything. The setbacks, the height of the building, the length of the driveway, everything still has to be complied with under the R20 zoning. And finally, the most important thing I want you to remember, some of you, when you ran for office recently, recently, or even in the prior time when you had to run for office, you stood up and you told all of us, "I heard you say it. I heard you say it. We're going to help you protect your neighborhoods. We're going to do it. We're going to find a way to control the high-density housing that we've been overwhelmed with in the last decade. We will do that." Some of you are sitting right here, just remember your promise. Thank you very much.
Anyone else care to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sue Terry, and I live at 3480 Pine Tree Drive in Forest Hills. My husband and I have lived in our home for over 20 years, and I lived in this neighborhood with my family during high school and college. Sorry. My husband was raised in Forest Hills. I have never spoken before city council, but I feel passionate about this rezoning request. I see Forest Hills as a special and unique place. On our own City of Smyrna website, it says, "There is a lasting quality to our neighborhoods." Forest Hills is one of the neighborhoods described, and this is what it says, "Trees, trees, trees, and a forest of homes of many..." "Trees, trees, trees, and a forest of homes of many styles and lot sizes. One can get lost in the security and tranquility of Forest Hills, considered one of the most desirable established neighborhoods in Smyrna. Our neighborhood is a place where people from other neighborhoods come to walk because of the shade provided by our large, mature, beautiful trees. I walk in our neighborhood regularly and people driving through often stop and ask me if I know of any houses for sale. They describe the neighborhood as quaint, charming, not cookie cutter, special." And they are right. It's a very desirable neighborhood where people are friendly, helpful, social, take family walks, have playgroups, special activities for children, a neighborhood group with events, a Facebook page, and a newsletter. We have people, young, old, married, single, families with children of all ages. Many of the homes have been remodeled and updated and the neighborhood has changed and grown in a positive way. People take great pride in their homes and take care of their property. We have beautiful, mature trees and plants that have been here for generations and all kinds of birds and wildlife because of the trees and plants. It seems that we are now at a tipping point where the charm, the trees, and the special quality are beginning to disappear. When developers, in search of their greatest profit, want to put two, 3,800 square foot or above, and we heard tonight, 4,000, where one much smaller home has been for 67 years, thereby more than developing the density, build houses more than twice the size and height of neighboring houses, cut down most of the mature trees and shrubs, and build houses out of character with the neighboring houses, we are losing the Forest Hills described on the city website, the one with lasting quality, the one with trees, 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 and a forest of homes of many styles and lot sizes. On my way to a doctor's appointment, I recently drove through a neighborhood experiencing a rezoning request, and there were many signs saying, "Please respect our neighborhood." That is what I'm asking you to do tonight by denying this rezoning request, case 219018 at 1460 Memory Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here as well. My name is Janice Sutherland. I live at 1516 Collier Place. I've been a resident of Smyrna for 18 years plus. My husband and I love the charm of Smyrna. We moved from midtown Atlanta and I think that our proposal before you is really a bridge to the future. Hear the remarks of the people behind me and I take it very seriously. First of all, we're not some big developer. I live right around the corner and I can see that it's a wonderful neighborhood and putting the two houses on the lots seem to be appropriate because Smyrna's going forward. There's many things that we've agreed to, I think, that enhance those two houses. And I want to be a good neighbor and I think our proposal is a bridge to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak?
All right, glad I corrected my mental error earlier and allowed people to actually speak at the public hearing. Is this the appropriate time to close the public hearing? Okay. With that, it's closed. I'll turn it over to Councilman Gould, whose district this is in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a lot of folks that care a great deal about the city, a great deal about the neighborhoods here, both on the applicant side and the residents. But based on the testimony that I've heard here tonight, I'm going to move to deny item 4A, 2019-438, zoning request Z19-18, rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the development of two single-family homes at a density of 2.2 units per acre, 0.9 acres, landlot 557, 1460 Memory Lane, applicant Reggie Lopes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Okay, we have computer issues. We have a motion by Mr. Gould and a second by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor of the motion, please vote by a show of hands. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Okay, it's approved 6 to 1 with Councilman Wagner. Next item is 4B, 2020-38, public hearing, zoning request Z20-001, rezoning from R-15 to GC for use as an engineering office, .59 acres, landlot 381 and 412, 740 Concord Road, J.D. Davis LLC. Anybody that wants to speak on this item or thinks they might want to speak on this item, please come up and be sworn in. Thank you. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
J.D. Davis LLC is requesting a rezoning from R-15 residential to GC General Commercial for 740 Concord Road. The applicant would like to use the existing building as an engineering office. The subject property is zoned R-15, however, it has been used commercially by the same owner for many years as a non-conforming use. The property is occupied by an existing structure that will remain. The Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval by a vote of 6 to 0 at the January 13, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R-15 to GC for 740 Concord Road.
Rusty, you want to come up?
All right. This rezoning request is basically dealing with a zoning issue on our zoning map. We have three commercial property, or three commercially-used properties that have a zoning designation of R-15. This property has been used by Smyrna Marine for a long time. They are no longer operating at this location. New person has purchased, the applicant has purchased the property and they're trying to open their engineering office. When they come in for the business license process, we found the issue and we asked them to come back through the process and rezone this to GC General Commercial. The location is 740 Concord Road. It's a little over a half acre in size. The applicant is proposing to use the property as an engineering office and proposing to change the zoning from R-15 to General Commercial, which is the red color you see up there. So the adjoining properties to the east and south are GC. The adjoining properties to the west and north are R-15, but they are all used as commercial use. So we'll have the same request come back through when those uses change on those properties and require us to bring them up to code. With this request, there's no change to the city's future land use map. It is currently Community Activity Center. GC is an appropriate zoning designation under the Community Activity Center zoning classification. This is a survey of the subject property. There's an existing building. There's their access drive to the property is pretty much the width of their property and then they have some parking at the front. Here's a picture of the subject property. And then the adjoining properties give you a little context. Community Development is recommending approval of the rezoning from GC, from R-15 to GC for use as an engineering office. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions, Rusty?
I do have a question. So with the, I know there's a lot of uses that are allowed under General Commercial. Are there any, like, limits in terms of those uses on this one?
No, we're not proposing any limits at this point.
Okay, because, anyway, that's what I was wondering, because it's going, you know, if it's engineering office, that's a lot different than a lot of the uses that are allowed. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Rusty? All right, I'd like to call the applicant up.
Good evening. My name's Joel Davis. I'd like to thank you all for hearing this tonight. Congratulations on your new police chief. What I would like to do to this property is renovate it, upgrade the saw, the building, and become part of the Smyrna business community. I don't really have anything else much to say, but I'm willing to answer any questions.
Any questions?
What kind of engineering are you, officer, you looking to put in?
I'm a civil engineer. We do underground utility locating.
Next question is, that building, I go by it a couple times a day and there are several additions, I should say. Any plans to remodel anything on the outside or are you pretty much going to keep it like it is at this point?
Well, I'm certainly going to do the front facade and I'm going to see about doing the rest of it.
Okay. That's all I have, ma'am.
Well, in the utility locating service, will you have a lot of vehicle traffic there? Is that where your trucks will be kept?
No, most of my vehicles are kept at my employees' homes. They work remotely.
Gotcha.
They're usually only in one day a week for a meeting.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak for or against this item? All right, close the public hearing session and turn it over to Councilman Lindley. This is in his ward.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, motion to approve is presented.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item 4C is 2020-39, it's public hearing, zoning request Z20-002, rezoning from RTD to RDA for the development of a two-lot subdivision at 5.6 acres, units per acre, 0.353 acres, landlot 593, 2790 Matthew Street with FCJ Partners LLC as the applicant. Anybody who is going to speak for or against this, or thinks they might, come up and be Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
FCJ Partners LLC is requesting approval of a rezoning for 2790 Matthew Street from RTD to RDA for the development of two single-family detached residents at a density of 5.68 units per acre. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing duplex and then subdivide the parcel into two lots and construct two single-family homes. The Planning and Zoning Board approved the rezoning by a vote of 6 to 0 at the January 13, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from RTD to RDA for the development of two single-family units with conditions.
Rusty, you want to come up?
Yes, this is a rezoning for a property over at 2790 Matthew Street. The property is an existing duplex, so it's a single building with two residential units on one parcel. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing duplex and subdivide the property into two parcels and build two new single-family homes. The existing zoning is RTD. The applicant is requesting to go to RDA, residential attached, detached. If you look at the zoning vicinity map, the properties to the north, west, and south are all RTD. And the properties across Matthew Street are RDA. The city's future land use map classifies property as medium-high density residential. That's up to 10 units per acre for that classification. The proposed density is around 5.8 for the property, so they're under 6 units per acre, so there's no change in the future land use for the property. This is the subject property with respect to the site design. They are requesting the setbacks outlined in the RDA zoning district, which is a front setback 25 feet, side setback 5, and a rear of 30. These homes will have one shared driveway that will be accessed off of Matthew Street and you'll go to the rear of the homes and access the garages at the rear of the property. These are the proposed stormwater detention facilities. And then there is a right-of-way dedication and proposed sidewalk. These are the proposed home elevations for the site. Pictures of the actual duplex. And then pictures of the homes across the street and adjoining the property. Community Development recommends approval of rezoning from RTD to RDA for two single-family units at 5.6 units per acre with the following conditions. Standard condition number one, related to the composition of the homes. Number two, the bearing of the utilities underground. Number three, the developer shall be responsible for the traffic improvements deemed necessary during the plan review. Four, no debris should be buried on the lots. Number five, they shall comply with the city's tree ordinance. Number six, the tree plan must be prepared by a registered landscape architect. Number seven, the yard and common areas are to be sowed and landscaped. And number eight is a tree planting schedule for each lot. In addition to the standard conditions, we have some special conditions. Number nine lays out the setbacks for each lot. 10 requires a minimum driveway length, 22 feet. 11 is the right-of-way dedication along Matthew Street. 12 is a requirement for new curb and gutter and sidewalk along the property frontage of Matthews. 13 limits the building height to 35 feet. And 14, the developer shall meet the fire access requirements deemed necessary by the fire marshal. 15, the developer shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by Public Works. 16, the developer shall be responsible for stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. And 17 ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted. And 18 ties the zoning of the property to the elevations submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions, Rusty? Thank you. This time, I'll call the applicant up and make comment.
Good evening. My name is Frank Thierry from FCJ Partners.
Good evening, my name is Frank Thierry from F, F C J Partners. I don't really have much to contribute to Mr. Vermon's, uh, presentation. It was pretty detailed, so I'll glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you for being here this evening.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this item? And if not, we'll close the public hearing portion and turn it over to Councilman Lindley. This is in his ward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I make a motion to approve as presented.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. Item five is priv- privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business, six A twenty twenty dash one zero one. Approval to hire Carol Sickert as the D- Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. I'm gonna turn it over to Tammy Sadler Jones.
With the upcoming retirement of our current H R Director Kay Bullock, um, Kay will be retiring on April the third. The H R Director position was posted, and about forty resumes were received. A panel interview was held with candidate Carol Sickert. She previous, she previously worked for the City of Smyrna from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand twelve. During this time, she worked as the H R Assistant, Payroll Coordinator, Benefits Coordinator, and as the H R Manager. Carol is currently the H R Director at the City of Sandy Springs, a position she has held for the, uh, last seven years. With Carol's past work experience and knowledge of the City of Smyrna operations and her overall H R and risk management experience, I would like to recommend for appointment for the city's next Director of Human Resource and Risk Management, Carol Sickert, as the, um, candidate. Uh, she was unable to be here this evening. She is on a trip with her daughter's school. But as I mentioned, I would like to recommend her for our Director of Human Resources and Risk Management.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Somebody send word to France, she made it. Item six B, twenty twenty dash one zero three, approval of mid-year budget amendments to reallocate funds for item not included in adopted fiscal year twenty twenty budget. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
There are several items that were not included in the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty budget, so staff is requesting budget amendments to cover these costs. The first is the annual maintenance on the Axon Enterprise contract that provides body-worn cameras and in-car cameras for our police department. The annual maintenance was not included in the fiscal year twenty twenty budget. The total expense is one hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred, ten dollars and forty cents. We are requesting to use seventy-one thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars from contingency to cover this expense and the remainder from reallocations from the adopted budget. The second item is the new proposed monument sign and lettering on City Hall honoring former Mayor A. Max Bacon. Based on estimates received, we are requesting to use fourteen thousand dollars in contingency to cover these costs. The third item is the salary difference and overlap of time for the new H R Director, so we need a budget amend, a budget adjustment of fifteen thousand dollars. The balance in contingency prior to these transfers is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eighty-three dollars. The adjusted amendment, amended budget amount is one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. This will leave one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred dollars in the contingency account. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendments.
Any questions or comments from the council? All right, I'm gonna turn this over to Councilman Welsh, who chairs our finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think we've all discussed these and looked over them very closely. Realize that one of them, the, is a, a large expenditure for the, the maintenance of our cameras and so forth, and it was simply an oversight. And we have a budget book that's about four inches thick. If we only missed one item, we did very well. Uh, with that, I make a motion to approve, uh, item two zero two zero dash one oh three, approval of a minute amended to our budget for the twenty twenty.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item six C, twenty twenty dash one zero four, approval of extended work hours for General Contact, Contractor Balfour Beatty and the construction of King Springs Elementary School. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background.
Balfour Beatty is the general contractor for the construction of King Springs Elementary School and is requesting an extension of normal work hours for the completion of the school building prior to the start of the new school year, which is planned for August third, twenty twenty. Due to adverse weather conditions for the past two months, the project is currently behind schedule, and additional work hours are needed to catch up. Balfour Beatty is requesting a variance from the provisions of the city's noise ordinance. They request an extension of work hours from seven A M. to five P M. On Saturday and Sunday, from February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, to June seventh, twenty twenty. Staff reviewed the request for extended work hours and has concerns about the work starting at seven A M. on these two days due to the proximity of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Community Development is recommending that the contractors start working at eight A M. And end at six P M. on Saturday and Sunday, from February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, to June seventh, twenty twenty.
This is in Councilmember Welsh's district. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, now, this, this was a hard one for me to, uh, to swallow, but I understand the plight of the contractor out there. The, this, it was especially hard to, to approve the Sunday hours that we have and, and waking up the, the neighbors around that site at eight o'clock on both Saturday and Sunday. But in the end, I, I think it's gonna be much less easier to swallow than it would be to have this school not be able to open on time. Uh, so with that, Mr. Mayor, I make a mo- motion to approve item twenty twenty dash one oh four to extend the work hours for the general contractor, Balfour Beatty, um, per, per the outline.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item six D is the agenda item that we added. Um, it's for Ward Five, Planning and Zoning, Board Member Appointed, Appointed Jim Davis. I'll turn that over to Councilmember Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this time, I would like to move to approve item six D, twenty twenty dash one zero eight, approval of Ward Five appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Jim Davis. This is a two-year term to expire December twenty twenty-one.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the January thirtieth, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of the February third, twenty twenty Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, approval of the February third, twenty twenty Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh two, by adding Article Five, Water System, to include new sections one oh two dash fifteen, one oh two dash sixteen, and one oh two dash seventeen to satisfy mandatory requirements set forth by the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District and Environmental Protection Agency. Item E, approval to use the Cooperative Procurement Contract, number two zero one nine dash zero nine, from Rockdale County for sanitary sewer rehabilitation services, and award contract to I P R Southeast LLC, fifty-two oh seven Burr Rabbit Road, Stone Mountain, Georgia, three zero zero eight three, using line item pricing. Item F, approval to award R F P twenty dash zero one seven, landscape, landscape maintenance to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Ashford Gartners, in the amount of six hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents annually, located at one six zero four zero Birmingham Way, Milton, Georgia, three zero 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 four, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item G, approval to use council chambers for town hall meeting hosted by Commissioner Bob Ott, May twelfth, twenty twenty, seven P M. to nine P M. Item H, approval of a subdivision plat for thirty-eight eighty Ridge Road to subdivide the property into two lots, one point five three acres, landlot six two five, thirty-eight eighty Ridge Road, Mark Combs. Item I, approval of revised personnel policies, E M P one dash zero, E M P eight dash zero, E M P twelve dash zero, E M P seventeen dash zero, E M P eighteen dash zero, E M P twenty dash zero, and D I S three dash zero one, and authorize the mayor to sign related documents. And item J, approval of new personnel policy, B E N five dash zero, City Chaplaincy Program, and authorize mayor to sign related documents.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item nine is Ward of Committee Reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say a word of thank you, um, to all the community that came out for a really great event, as, as the mayor mentioned already, uh, on Saturday for our Black History Month celebration. Uh, we had a great community out, uh, outcome there. Plenty of people from all over the place, a really diverse crowd of people that came out to support that. Certainly wanna, you know, thank, um, not only the, the committee that we had, which did a tremendous job, but also our staff, who also did a tremendous job pulling a lot of weight, uh, to get this, uh, event going. And I, I totally agree with you, Mayor. I think this definitely serves a template of what, what can be done in the future. So, uh, with that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and compliments to Committee Councilman Wheaton and all the work the staff and the community group did to put that together. Met a lot of good new business folks, met a couple of people that just opened up their businesses here in Smyrna, and it was a, it was a really wonderful, enjoyable, enjoyable day. Uh, two quick points, um, put on your calendar, April twenty-seventh, if you don't mind, for the annual Susan T. Pearson Memorial Golf Tournament that benefits, uh, the Campbell High School Education Foundation. Uh, it'll be over at Fox Creek, so if you have any interest in playing or sponsoring, the money goes to a good cause. The foundation pays for, uh, extra counselors at the high school and other educational-related activities. So, they, come on out, it's always a fun time. And then, point of good news is the Campbell High School soccer teams, both the, uh, Boys Varsity and Girls Varsity are currently ranked number one in the state for size seven A, and seven A's the biggest school, school size in the state, so. With that, I yield.
Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the librarian, Mary Moore, asked me to make this announcement for her. Um, in the library news, Smyrna Library will host an evening of storytelling in celebration of Black History Month. Storyteller Gloria Stowers will present tales from little leaders, bold women in black history on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at four P M. in the library meeting room. This event is designed for families with children aged four to ten years old. Please be sure to visit the Black History Month Student Art Exhibit in the reading room on the first floor as well. The art is inspired by prominent African-American artists. And I would also like to echo, echo that that was a really nice event and thank everybody that, um, put it together, uh, all the hard work that went in with the volunteers and, um, and Louis Wheaton, that Councilman Louis Wheaton, his work as well. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to once again welcome Chief Joe Bennett. I think he's already gone home. He's going to tuck his little one in, but, uh, um, welcome to the, um, to the chief, to being chief in the City of Smyrna. I wish him many years of good service here. With that, I yield.
Mr. Travis Lindley.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, just, I wanna echo what everyone else has said. Uh, thanks to, uh, Councilmember Wheaton on a, a great event, and to the city staff and everybody who made that a success. A reminder that, uh, Ward Three will be having a award meeting here at City Hall on March fifteenth at four P M., uh, from four to five P M., I should add. Um, and, uh, would echo, uh, Councilmember Welch in congratulating, uh, the new police chief. Thank you.
Mr. Austin Wagner.
Yeah, just, uh, two quick things. Uh, first, I wanted to take the opportunity here to thank, uh, Mayor Norton for, uh, putting together this, uh, Special Committee on Policies and Procedures, um, and having myself chaired along with, uh, Councilmembers Lindley and Wilkinson to take the, have the opportunity to look at some of our, um, personnel policies and procedures and just, uh, make sure we're all on the, the same page there. I think that'll be a good opportunity. So we'll be meeting over the next, uh, couple of weeks and months and try to get a report back by, uh, May first. Um, next thing, I'm, uh, also, uh, excited that we'll have the opportunity and a movement of transparency, that we're moving forward to try to get our campaign finance disclosures online, um, and get them public, not behind an open records request. So, um, I think, uh, everyone in the council is, um, open to that transparency, and we're excited to, to move forward there.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have nothing to report tonight, but thank you.
Item ten is show cause hearings. Unless, Ms. Sad, I guess, Ms. Sadler Jones, did you have anything? Mr. Cochran? Okay. Show cause hearings, we have none. Uh, item eleven is citizen input. No one signed up for citizen input this evening. Is there anybody out there that wanted to say anything? Okay. Invite you up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is, uh, Edward Castro. I'm a resident of the City of Atlanta, thirty-nine, seventy-eight North Ivy Road. I actually, uh, believe that we did have an opportunity to speak on twenty twenty dash one hundred, but that was on your consent agenda. May I continue?
Sure.
So, Ed Castro Landscape prepared a bid for your, um, grounds and, uh, landscape enhancements. We were hoping that all the facts and figures, all the, uh, supporting evidence, would be provided before you were making a decision on the award. We were the lowest bid. I think each one of you is elected in a public office, and you've essentially, without knowledge maybe, um, elected to spend upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to award to the second lowest bidder. We were one hundred percent compliant. We've been in business for twenty-eight years. We have never done, and doing public work since two thousand and four. We have never issued a bid that was non-compliant, and in this case, we did not. While the incumbent does have the experience of maintaining the property, we were deemed not to have sufficient experience. We are three hundred percent larger than the, uh, company that you did award in the consent agenda. We have very solid financials. I've been practicing landscape architecture for thirty years. We just, um, secured a lease in Smyrna. We're in the process of, uh, trying to buy a facility. So we are very respectful and supportive of the City of Smyrna and think that you guys have a wonderful product for the residents. So, um, I, I don't know what recourse, um, there is, but, um, I just wanted to reinforce and make it a public record that you did vote, uh, seven, nothing, to pay more money, taxpayer funds, to a contractor. In our search through all the public records, we're not aware of, uh, any instances where you, um, did not award to the lowest responsive bid. There may have been one where you ordered a- There may have been one where you ordered a cable service. Maybe that wasn't apples and apples, but I'm just very surprised that that happened. We were essentially shut out. We did have some conversation from some of the staff members that we would be awarded the contract. That was non-binding. I understand that's how that works, but we did enter into a lease for February 1 because we were told unofficially from a city employee to be prepared to start February 1. All we were asking was to come out and do a facility tour. We have one of the nicest facilities in the nation. We have 98 committed employees. I'm aware of some of the people that have supported the City of Smyrna, and I think it's a wonderful community. It was something that we were very interested in working with. Is that a 30-second warning, or am I out of time?
30-second warning.
Okay. And I have James Cogle, I'm sorry, James Crockett, who led our team, and they have over 200 hours, our executive team and production team, in putting the bid together. We're very competitive and a leader in our space. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last, unless there's anybody else. That's the last citizen to speak. If there's no more business to be brought before this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:30.